...
Good day to all the people who are standing. This week, again, our community, unfortunately, most wonderful member of our community who the family has been a very active partner of our community for many years. For those of you who didn't know Mrs. Dotson, she had been around for a little while. She had been living outside of town, but she grew up and then those of us who grew up, those of you who know Jeff Dotson, one of our assistant fire chiefs, this is his mother, and she's also the wife of former pastor Dotson from St. Elizabeth's Church. So again, very, very staple part of our community and a wonderful family and wonderful lady. So I ask you all to please, just a moment of silence to remember them, keep them in their prayers. I thank you all very much. Tonight, we have two special events that will start with every meeting. We're going to swear in, one, a new police officer in our community, so very happy about that. And then also, we are going to have a great and wonderful day of promoting our police officers to sergeant tonight. So again, two very wonderful things. First, a person, of course, again, we welcome Kelly Murphy. Kelly, thank you so much. We look very forward to working with you, working with us and being a part of our community as a police officer. Again, you grew up here, you know our community very well, so we're very happy that you're going to be doing this. So we're really thrilled. I know you've got to get to your, to start the E P Academy very quickly, so we're going to let you start with that tonight. So we may ask you and your family to please come up front and share your name. Kelly, if you have to please.
Hi, Kelly.
Do salam swear?
Do salam swear.
To uphold the constitution of the United States.
To uphold the constitution of the United States.
The constitution of the state of New York.
Constitution of the state of New York.
The laws and ordinances of the Village of Florport.
Laws and ordinances of the Village of Florport.
Can I further promise?
I further promise.
Faithfully execute?
Faithfully execute.
The duties of a police officer?
Duties of a police officer.
Of the Village of Florport.
Of the Village of Florport.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. We're going to ask, because we have a couple minutes, we're going to take a picture in a few minutes, but we are going to, let's get, please take seats. At this time, ladies and gentlemen, we are going to, we're going to, Dean, Dean has been an active member of our police force for 12 years, he served in the New York City Police Department. Dean has taken an active role in many things like the one in our police office. Not just the uniform, but taking on the role of making sure everybody is looking as best they can, but also as protected as they can be with the uniform, but also active shooter training, active taking on the role of our arms trainer. And again, everything that you have done, we thank you so much, and you more than deserve such promotion. So Dean, thank you, thank you. We are very grateful for everything you do. So with that, I may ask you, please raise your hand and repeat after me. I, Dean Pan.
I, Dean Pan.
Do salam swear?
Do salam swear.
To uphold the constitution of the United States.
To uphold the constitution of the United States.
The constitution of the state of New York.
The constitution of the state of New York.
The laws and ordinances of the Village of Florport.
The laws and ordinances of the Village of Florport.
And a further promise?
A further promise.
To faithfully execute?
To faithfully execute.
The duties of sergeant?
The duties of sergeant.
Of the Florport Police Department?
Of the Florport Police Department.
To the best of my ability?
To the best of my ability.
So help me God. Congratulations. Congratulations. Kelly and your family, if you guys still want to, if you're trying to. I'd like, we do it all together, not in two separate ones, is that okay? Great, so we ask everybody to come up. Everybody okay? Now we'll just do one each hand.
Okay, so one hand, we'll set that, we'll, we'll hope to.
Thanks a lot.
And if you just move a little closer to. Get up, get up.
I also want to thank all the members of our police force who worked tonight. Thank you, gentlemen. I also want to welcome, tonight, Justice Andrea Marino's here with us, and she's working with our main class. Okay, so welcome. If there's any questions you have for us, please direct it to Deputy Mayor Heather Fisher. Tom just kidding, just kidding. Thank you all, thank you for coming tonight. We are going to go through our regular board meeting, and then we will have our trustee for the board reports, and then after that, we'll open the floor to our residents for their concerns. So with that, Madam Park?
Thank you, Madam Mayor Longeford. I would ask the board to approve the minutes of November 20th, which was a regular board meeting.
Any discussion? All those in favor? I oppose, it is carried.
I would ask the board to approve the schedule of the council table consisting of the following. General fund, one million fifty-one thousand seven hundred and fifty-four dollars and seventy-eight cents. Swimming pool fund, four hundred and eighty-eight dollars and sixteen cents. Community development, zero. Capital fund, eight hundred and seventy-eight thousand eight hundred and ninety-four dollars and fifty cents, for a grand total of one million nine hundred and thirty-one thousand one hundred and thirty-seven dollars and forty-four cents.
I will give a resolution.
Second, any discussion? Ms. Walsh, would you please pull board?
Trustee Fitzgerald.
Aye.
Trustee Pombaya.
Aye.
Trustee Chang.
Aye.
Trustee Chiara.
Aye.
And Mayor Longeford. I would ask the board to approve the request of Fort Phillips Studio to use the courtroom in the west wing of Village Hall for its annual staff meeting and award presentation on Thursday, January 10th, 2019, from 6:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m.
So moved. Second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
I oppose, it is carried.
I would ask the board to determine that the issuance of bonds in the amount of seven hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars for the acquisition of Public Works Trucks is a type-two action as that term is defined in CEBR.
I will give a resolution.
Second, any discussion? Ms. Walsh, would you please pull board?
Trustee Fitzgerald.
Aye.
Trustee Pombaya.
Aye.
Trustee Chang.
Aye.
Trustee Chiara.
Aye.
And Mayor Longeford. I would ask the board to authorize the issuance of bond anticipation amounts in the amount of seven hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars for the acquisition of Public Works Trucks.
I'll offer that resolution. Second, any discussion? Ms. Walsh, would you please pull board?
Trustee Fitzgerald.
Aye.
Trustee Pombaya.
Aye.
Trustee Chang.
Aye.
Trustee Chiara.
Aye.
And Mayor Longeford. I would ask the board to accept the resignation letter of Public Works employee Joseph Frieda, who was a motor equipment operator, effective November 30th, 2018.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Ms. Walsh, would you please pull board?
Trustee Fitzgerald.
Aye.
Trustee Pombaya.
Aye.
Trustee Chang.
Aye.
Trustee Chiara.
Aye.
And Mayor Longeford.
I would also just want to extend our, I want to thank Joe for everything he did for us, and he's moving on to a better job, and hopefully something that he's looking forward to do, so I envision.
I would ask the board to authorize the payment of his, Joe Fried's unused accrued sick time, excuse me, accrued time in accordance with the C S E A contract, as of his resignation date of November 30th, 2018. On vacation day, one hundred and sixty-five dollars and five cents, and his unused sick time of two thousand five hundred and seventy-four dollars and seventy-eight cents, for a grand total of two thousand seven hundred and thirty-nine dollars and eighty-three cents.
I will give a resolution.
Second, any discussion? Ms. Walsh, would you please pull board?
Trustee Fitzgerald.
Aye.
Trustee Pombaya.
Aye.
Trustee Chang.
Aye.
Trustee Chiara.
Aye.
And Mayor Longeford.
Aye.
I would ask the board to authorize the mayor to sign the service fee agreement in Skinner and Davis C P As for the service support program effective November 1st, 2018, through October 31st, 2019, with a base fee amount of two thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars.
I'll offer that resolution. Second, any discussion? Ms. Walsh, would you please pull board?
Trustee Fitzgerald.
Aye.
Trustee Pombaya.
Aye.
Trustee Chang.
Aye.
Trustee Chiara.
Aye.
And Mayor Longeford. I would ask the board to approve the request of the Wellness Education Committee to use the Daisy Room as their work center for their 2019 meeting and beginning agenda as presented in their request.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? I oppose, it is carried.
I would ask the board to approve the termination and retirement pay for Sergeant Ron Gadwin and Lieutenant Mike Selfie for their earned accrued time, and according to the P V A contract effective November 30th as presented.
I'll offer that resolution. Second, any discussion? Ms. Walsh, would you please pull board?
Trustee Fitzgerald.
Aye.
Trustee Pombaya.
Aye.
Trustee Chang.
Aye.
Trustee Chiara.
Aye.
And Mayor Longeford.
Aye.
I would ask the board to authorize the mayor to sign the verdict proposal for their continuation of technical site services of the Long Island Railroad Expansion Project in the amount of fifty thousand dollars.
I'll offer that resolution. Second, any discussion? Ms. Walsh, would you please pull board?
Trustee Fitzgerald.
Aye.
Trustee Pombaya.
Aye.
Trustee Chang.
Aye.
Trustee Chiara.
Aye.
And Mayor Longeford.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. With regards to D P W, I'd like to just extend my thanks to all the MetLife D P W for the work they've done over the last couple of weeks, specifically leaf pickup that occurred, does a lot to keep the drains moving, the streets, especially during the winter months. Also for their, putting up the various decorations, the lights in the turnpike and over there in Tula. And then lastly, certainly that leasehold work that they did, not only for preparation for our last project, but also for the theme that they did for the tree lighting, so the mayor talked about that, as I said before. And then secondly, with regards to Belmont, known in news, other than, you may have noticed on our Facebook page over the last couple of days, we're going to forward for the rest of the week, we are basically disseminating what the presentation was, what it was given to the community leaders about a month ago, with a little snippet of the presentation, and some verbiage along to try to describe the concerns that we have with the entire project. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much. Doctor.
Thank you. Good evening. First, for our fire department, the memorial service for F T N Y, the M T, Martha Stewart, is held already in victory on November 38. E M T Stewart, resident of South Florport, passed away from 11 years later. Our Florport Fire Department, in particular Rescue Company, will protect orders to the Stewart family and friends, and firefighters from South Florport, F T N Y, and the local one. Once again, guests to our Village Gadget Firehouse have found warmth, comfort, friendship, peace, and very sad time in their lives. As always, we salute and thank our Florport Fire Department for extraordinary dedication of service to community members and fellow firefighters, and our Florport Department of Public Works and police for their valuable support. The holidays are a very special time of year in Florport, when our homes, businesses, and neighborhoods sparkle with greenery, lights, and festive decorations. The chief staff of firefighters urge all residents and businesses to avoid destructive fires and injuries by being vigilant and observing important fire safety rules. The ladder structure has simmered with holiday decorations to retrieve any rescue responders and find them quickly in the event of an emergency. With holiday lights, both outdoors and indoors, ensure that the wiring is intact and that extension cords are not overloaded. Turn off holiday lights overnight. More candles and fireplace has cast a beautiful glow to their lips and allow children to use them without the most present and never be among attended. And Chief Michael is famous for his reminders to hydrate, hydrate, hydrate. That includes our Christmas trees, too. Dry needles and branches are particularly risky to catch fire. The Florport Fire Department wishes all joyous holiday season, one in which all of our people and property remain safe. And for the Covert Avenue Chamber of Commerce, I'd like to thank the Covert Chamber for ushering in the holiday season with a fun-toe festival, tree lighting ceremony. Thanks to the Suwankai School Jazz Band for the festive music, to the Covert Businesses for the delicious soup, hot chocolate, the peace and candy canes, and for raging the very popular horse and carrot rides, to Santa Claus for leaving all lighting the bright and colorful Christmas tree, and to the Stewart Manor Fire Department and Departments of Public Works in Stewart Manor and Florport for their valuable assistance. Now that the holiday season is here, we hope you will enjoy every moment and shop local.
Thank you very much. Mr. Chang.
So on the third track issues, we're still waiting for final detour mapping from 3 T C on their suggestions of what traffic patterns will be once Covert Avenue is closed. That's going to be a six-month close duration, complete duration, closed closure, complete duration. And we're still working with them. Their original plan is to send traffic from Upset Turnpike, go up on Tula, right on Plainfield, and that would have been impossible. So now they're revamping their detour mapping. We are involved with the Villages of Stewart Manor and Walheim Park, and ourselves on that whole traffic plan, and waiting for what's going to happen next. It appears that with a little push from our county legislators, Nicolello and Muscarola, the county now has asked for the police department to give us traffic accident reports of Tula and Plainfield, so we can solve that light issue on Plainfield Avenue, as you hear, back in only, and Tula, hopefully it'll get those synced up, and maybe also this area over here, Tula and Caroline and Bourbon, where we have that whole situation where people can't cross because people getting into the intersection. It seems like the county is finally looking at the problems that we are having, and as much as they are their own, we can't do anything with their own. They have to initiate a process.
Trustee Chiara. Thank you.
Officer Rexena, session one recreation programs are coming to an end, and registration for the next session will be taking place on January 9th and January 10th, from 6:30 to 8:30 p.m. at the Full Bridge Room. Registration for our seniors will be on the same dates, January 9th and 10th, from 9:00 a.m., 9:30 a.m. to 1:30 p.m. More information on this program can be found on the Winter Items and on our Village website. Just a reminder that the Winter Park hours are currently 8:00 a.m. to 4:30 p.m. daily, weather permitting. The Tiny Town Project has come along really nice. Most of the apparatuses are in, the plankings are in this week, and the final stage will be putting the pavers in along with the turf. We're a couple of weeks out of completion. The Recreation Tree Lighting is on Friday, December 21st. Gates will open at 7:00 p.m. with free skating, cookies, and hot chocolate, and of course, a visit from our main guest, Santa. The tree, the tree will be lit at 7:30 p.m. or are welcome to attend. Thank you.
And for my report, I just want to really piggyback on a couple of things that were said here. First of all, the tree lighting, as you all know, Friday night, we lit the Village Christmas tree right in Memorial Park. There were a lot of people who helped to make that happen. I just want to thank them. First of all, so Public Works, of course, as Kevin Fitzgerald had talked about, Public Works putting the lights on, everything from taking care of it, straightening out the park, and making sure it was all done, putting the tents up for the Chamber of Commerce, making sure that the festivals went on without a hitch. So I thank all the gentlemen, and Kevin, please extend that to all of our, to all of our workers there. Police Department, Fire Department also played a key role in that night, and I want to thank them for all of their work. Susan Walsh helped put everything together, Lauren, and those all helping a little bit, and of course, Jerry making sure that everything was okay there. But Susan, everybody told me the same thing before, it was the Susan Walsh we got. So thank you very much. No, seriously, it's, and I thank you for coordinating the things you did. You know, it's been a staple of our community for a long time, and the last three years, this has grown. It's such a tremendous and wonderful event. We had to work at least a thousand, if not more, people there the other night with the rain. So you know, when you look at that and the happy faces of the kids, you know, the kids keep running up to light the tree. So it was a great night, and very grateful. And I thank Father Tom and all of the, of course, Dr. Cameron Allen, Mike Jacob, and the Chamber of Commerce, all their work for the festival. But of course, the Junior Women's Club, who started this tradition many, many, many years ago, and has made it grow. So I thank them for all the work that they've done. So as we kick off the season here, I again hope all of you enjoy as much as we did that night, and the season grows, and it just becomes a wonderful time for everybody. So really quickly, again, just feel excited for being here with Justin, Alex, and Evan, and getting us online to our members of the media, and then thank you guys for being here as always with us and being part of what we do. With that, I will ask for a motion to adjourn, and we will open the floor to our residents. So by a second, thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Can we open the floor now, anybody who might have questions for us, or issues and everything?
Hi, community. I'm Mr. Bernard. I did 140 dollar.
Welcome, gentlemen.
When was the last meeting where you had a little contentious with the trees? The last board meeting I remember that was, was that two months ago? I spoke to you, asked whether I was hoping to keep it private, I'm asking any resolution? Any on my neighbor at 144?
Yes.
I was out putting Christmas decorations Saturday, so I stepped up the candy cage, I look up, gotta be kidding me, rodents are walking vertically along the wall. I look at my neighbor Dad, I go, I see them, I go, yeah, nice. So they're crawling over the wall, three mice. They work its way to the front door, so it's going towards the light fixture. I'm like, all right, it's another candy cage, it's dealing with this. I go to videotape, they ran it to a hole. So I called Mark, we opened here.
We have to say.
Nothing. We have an emergency meeting on the block. Nothing is getting done. And these violations that they say that they're doing, a tree came out, so we find like, we kind of feel like we're getting pissed on and told to train it. Nothing is getting done. And what's more infuriating is that we're seeing new, new people that bought homes on the block. My, my new neighbor, he goes, I can't get this A C put in, the town's busting my chops, where to put the central air? Another neighbor, they go find this pigsty, they go down to his house, give him a violation because his water sits inches too high, hardworking, poor, a garbage cop. Across the street, Matt, Alex, and Michelle, they may have re-did the trench about 50 feet deep down the driveway, as they said there wasn't enough grass or something for a fence he's put in. And I finally, I said, let's have a meeting. So we all met in the neighbor's house. So we have a news reporter on the block, works for a national station. She goes, listen, I feel terrible to yell next to this. And she goes, do you want me to put a story out? Put it on the national news? Fox News? I'm like, eh, let's follow some sort of chain that can make it. The Verizon guy, jumping over the map, goes to work at that house, comes out, puts a mask on his face. So I'm home, I look at him, I go, yo, how bad is it there? He goes, I worked in Brooklyn for 20 years. This is the worst house I've ever been in. So I'm thinking, I used to be a cop in Brooklyn. So I'm like, my God, I did narcotics in East New York. You're telling me I'm living next to someone who picked it and piled it? And I'm sitting here, I go, 14 million taxes, my three kids go to Old Bay, so I don't go to the pool, I'm a beach guy, so I don't lose any of the resources here, not going to live next to this? It's not fair. And it's not fair. It looks like selective enforcement, that people that are trying to make their homes better are getting their chops busted. Between that, the dirt veil coming in, between the islanders coming in, between watching Fox Business, the federal rates are going up in December, so that means mortgage rates are going up, that means home prices will become depressed. So on top of all this, I get to compete if I want to get out of here, I get to live next to this animal? That's what it is. It's disgusting. The Verizon guy goes, I'm going to leave the door open for you to take a look. Up to the ceiling, combustibles. She's saying hydrate, hydrate the tree. And I left the police department, went to the fire department. I've never seen anything like that. It's worse than anything I saw in the hybrid. The amount of pack rat and clutter in that house. The house is close by here in Florport, you know, it's a step above breezy point. I mean, what's it going to take? Somebody to get hurt? So I called my attorney. Whatever, if you're not going to do anything, that's fine, but I want a letter sent to me, to my house with an address, so I can bring it to my lawyer. Here you go, John, this is what they said. Because nothing's getting done. Eagle John, this is what they said, because nothing's getting done. I've been here nine years. Nothing, nothing has gotten done. It's only gotten worse. So we're at this meeting at this house, and another neighbor goes, she got chased by a raccoon who went back into, into the garage. She goes out, feeds birds by, by the supergolf tops from Seven Minutes, she blows it all over the bay. I called the board alcohol, I said, hey, listen, you can't do this. You're attracting vermin, you can't do this. I got three little kids, what's the matter with you? How do you want the birds to eat? Well, you're killing the birds because they're gonna be able to fend for themselves. You know, for the property taxes I'm paying, like I said, I don't use the resources in town here. Why am I here? With the new salt deduction laws coming down the block? I'm looking at my wife, but she grew up on Long Island, she loves Long Island, I'm from Manhattan, grew up in the Bronx, so I'm like, why, why am I here? Like, if nothing's gonna get done here, not gonna live next to this, at least give me some animals so I can bring it home to the pride. I go, listen, if you want to continue living next to this animal, nothing's getting done.
I, I don't want to say nothing's getting done because we are working within the confines of what we can do, okay? We have, our, our building inspectors are there, they are working, we can't access the house until they let us into the house, okay? There are certain regulations that we have to abide by, we cannot, you know, property rights are sacrosanct in this country, you know that. I wouldn't, I wouldn't be able to walk into your house without just, without you giving us the permission and things like that to do that. So, the reality is, yes, I mean, I can just tell you right now, I have the pictures right here, I mean, we are looking at all of our options and all the things that we can do. Our building inspectors are trying to work with this woman to, to get things cleaned up and get it straightened out. So, to say that we're doing nothing, that's not the case, but we have to go with, with, within our confines and with.
So I'm using questions, like this guy Alex said, or two, there's three doctors on my block and two attorneys, I almost thought, I'm the poor guy in the block. Why would we, what if I decide to put a fence on my front lawn tomorrow and say, I don't care what they have to say, it's, it's my property like, like this woman does, and then I make people out crazy, I won't take a shower with a raincoat on, just like she does. Like, what, why, why are, why is she allowed to run roughshod on the street? And then this guy Alex comes home, hardworking people, everyone's working, he's gotta re-dig this trench, but why do you need to say, you do something over there and then I'll re-dig it?
Because we would do exactly what the law would allow us to do without, same thing. We can only go so far and do certain things. To say that we're not, we're not trying our best to, to get this straightened out, we are, but unfortunately, there are only certain rules that we are allowed, and the violations that, that have to be, the violations that are in control, we are doing whatever we can to get that done. But the reality is, is that it, one, we can issue notices of violation, it has to go through the, the systems, the court systems, things like that, as well as if it would be the same thing for you, if it was the same thing, it would be the same thing for Alex if he didn't, if he didn't, if he decided to put the fence up or he didn't, he decided not to comply with putting in the trench.
Well, let me ask you a question. Cause I've been told this now, I.
I understand this way, first time here, I did that house, I understand.
So if nothing's getting done, I know what you're saying, we're giving a violation, she doesn't care, you know what she trimmed the bushes with? A pair of scissors. Me and my neighbor, we're watching this, we're like, he's videotaping, he's laughing, are you watching this? Not. So I'm sitting, well, I don't know what else to do. So, could you send a letter to me, to my house, and just say, hey, this is what we're doing? That way, I, I, cause I, whenever I call the town, I put down a date, who I spoke to, and the nature of the fall. That way, when something does happen, I told white shoe law firm, here you go, start suing. Cause that's, that's usually what people stand their attention with, when they get sued. I mean, this is ridiculous.
You know, threats of lawsuits don't mean anything to us, the reality is.
It's not a threat, it's, it's something's gonna happen.
The reality is, is that we can only do certain things that we are allowed to do by the law, and we're doing those things. The reality is.
So what, 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 what is that? It's, it's, and we've been taken out, it's been nine years, so what is it? She's allowed to do, she has weeds, corn coming out of the butter, it's been, all been, Alice is going in and out of the house. What, what, what is the law? So that way, I can do it to my property. What, what is it, what, what's the law? What's the order? She, she's not paying these fines.
Go ahead. If I could just interrupt. Have you taken the time to look at the ordinances that the village has?
No.
Okay. Could we get a copy of those ordinances to?
Okay, you need this order.
Then, I'm gonna say, I've been a trustee for 30 years in this town.
Right.
Part of becoming a trustee. We would not have been able to gain access to the premises, inside access, okay? What you described, I, I don't know of any, any law right now that, that is being, that is the first time in your head, so I'm not trying to tell you that it is.
What, what, but I, that's what I'm asking, Ed.
Go ahead.
I've asked you before.
Yeah.
Why don't you go in front of her house? Cause I'm being honest, no one here sitting at this stairs would allow it to be their neighbor. And, and I'm just being honest, the common theme at that block, nobody in this stairs would have this as their, it wouldn't happen. It just wouldn't happen. Overgrown me, buckets of water in the backyard, buckets of water. This garbage going strewn out, bags of garbage being collected. Her car, she opens her car, the back, the backseat, just bags of trash. She's the one that goes to church, she gets, she goes to every mass, La La La, she's, she goes, she gets hubris nine times on Sunday. I understand she's not able to fool that, but, hey, that's not my problem.
I, I wouldn't characterize any of it, but, but what if the board of health, when you called that, what is it?
They came over and they said, we can't have the bird, we can't just go feed like that before.
So it's the only violation, they, what they were even talking about?
The very next day, she got a bird feed.
No, I'm saying, is that the only violation they observed from the exterior?
From, from the front.
From the exterior.
From the front. Cause, you know, that's all they, that's, that's all they did. There's a dog that's yelping nonstop. I go, where's that coming from?
Well, that, that.
I was saying, probably she has a dog, but she never walks it.
Well, that's something you can, you can hack on, but the police department, that is dog, it's incessantly marking, they will take out.
But isn't that right? The dog has never been outside.
Go ahead, Bob. I'm trying, I'm trying to speak to you and tell you what we can do legally, what we can't do legally. I would suggest, first of all, that we're gonna send you the applicable portion before we can look, give it to you. Do you go online, computer or not?
I, I do, but, or, or honestly, optics wise, just from an optic point of view, what it says, everyone on the block, you guys work, you guys pull the town up to get, hey, I wanna put a fence in, I wanna put central air, you get penalized. You should just, you should just, you should just be like her, hey, do what you wanna do. And then either that, or if we gotta live next to this, me, me wanting my neighbor to the other side should be allowed to put up an extra high fence, not the, the view, you shouldn't see the backyard. But I would draw the house, come up to my kitchen wall on the second floor and look into the backyard. It is so disgusting. I had to get compelled this summer to spray down my yard with some type of bug, this bug killer. He goes, it's horrendous. He goes, she's got city water. I mean, this is Zika virus, I mean, and, and nobody's helping us. Nobody's doing anything, nobody's helping us.
We'll do whatever we can within our, in the law that we can do. I, that's all I can do. However, I will come to your house, if that's okay.
Absolutely.
All right? I will come to meet with the neighbors and explain that this is all we can do.
I'm telling you, optically.
But the reality is, is this is, this is it. This is, what we, what we are doing is what we're allowed to do. If they were, and, and you called the board of health yourself.
Yes.
They only went so far because they can only, like, do cer- certain things. I've been involved with houses like this all across the town, I've said in many places, okay? There are only certain lights that you're allowed, certain things that you're allowed to do. We cannot go onto a property and just do certain things without, certain notifications without, violations without, going through the processes, and we're going through those processes.
You, you, now you understand, you're pushing us out of.
I, I, I totally understand.
Three houses down here, the guy's not even near because I didn't get the permit. He's just a violation for his warrant, at least he might go in here, why don't you send that La La La?
Okay. And, and you can say that, but the reality is that that's not what you want to do, and you wouldn't be up here if you were, if you were, if that's what you wanted to do.
No, no, I'm speaking from.
I know you are. You know, for instance, I mean, you're not a company wants to.
It doesn't look right. It looks like selective enforcement. Why did this guy get a fine?
It's not.
And nothing happens here.
I can tell you it's not selective enforcement. Like I said, I have the pictures right here myself.
Then what?
These are, these are, we're doing whatever we can that we're allowed to by law, and I know that's frustrating to you.
It, it is, you know why? Cause I, I'll tell you where the shows me.
And to tell you that.
Cause she's allowed to grow what she wants.
I mean, it's, we're just as frustrated as you are with people who do things like this, because we don't want this.
Well, then, you know why? I'm not, I'm not putting my lawn anymore.
And we'll get violations like everybody else?
No, just ask the, how do you pay? I don't pay.
Okay.
When, when you pay, go on, I'll pay, because I'm at the point now, but there'll be the attending, we could call the street.
Yeah. The media folks, just give the community the latest.
Again, that's why I suggested you look at the code, but that's, that's okay.
Just, I, I like the letter sent to me. I just want, I want something written, I want something in writing so I can bring it to my attorney. I don't have any faith anymore. I'm done. I had a dirty day, vermin. Now I have to go into my pocket, no one's gonna, are you gonna help me pay? I have to go get exterminated. To put down rat boxes? This is why I left Riverdale on the block for this? I gotta put down rat boxes in my yard because of this? My other neighbors, ready to have it laid out? And then on top of it, the, the exterminator goes, I called two exterminators, and the one guy in town, one friend's with goes, I got bad news for you.